Going very well. So far, I plan to have this done by October. Um, it's gonna be about fifty pages in length roughly. So I am nearing the halfway point at this point. Uh, and today I need to do some colors, so I have a bunch of pages here. Which um. Which are in various stages of progression, but the most important thing is that the line work is done. Um, so. So yeah, that's. In a good spot. Um, so right now I just wanna power through, cause I've been working on this in um. In. In a big uh. Sort of a batch of pages rather than one page at a time, like the first. The first uh ten pages or so, I was doing it like page per page. Uh, but I've switched over for efficiency sake and for my brain sake. Um, to doing it in batches, so I'm actually working from page fifteen to page twenty-one. Um, that's where we're at right now and. Uh, I started coloring this already because I've been trying to color match, um. You know, the problem with doing page to page is sometimes you forget what you did on the previous page, so I have. I have certain skin tones um for for the main character here, it's very warm. Uh, but when we switch scene, it turns into this very like cool purplish skin tone. So when I switched over to to this page now. Um, you know, I was struggling to kinda get that tone correct, I don't know if this looks any good on camera, but. Yeah, hopefully you get a good sense of that. Um, so. So yeah, yeah, working in batches helps, so you don't forget kinda what your process is, especially if you're starting to like juggle. A lot of different styles of work, um, of of coloring and stuff. And with this book, um, I have this sort of watercolor-y style that I'm using here. But I also have this. Kind of. I call it the 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 shiny shiny comic book style. Um. And that's what this is and so, so I guess that's a good place to start, right? Um, for this page, I've rendered out the main guy's colors already. Um. And they're more or less in the same tone, I I might adjust it a little later, but I think it's in a good spot. But this dude, I need him to 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 match that um. That shiny shiny comics coloring style, so that's what I'm gonna do first. Um. So for reference, let's see if I can make this work. I'm gonna put the photos up here. And I have a um. A running folder with all my pages in whatever stage of um. Progress they are, I I update this at the end of the day as I'm working on it. Uh, and they're good to have on the side for reference, so I can keep everything consistent. And I know that I want this guy here to look like that guy there and you know. What's nice about him is he's kind of a. A monotone, so. It's not gonna be super hard to to get it that way, um. And I think when I'm doing, oh hey, KJ Pluamimi. What's up, what's up? Welcome to the stream. Um. Yeah, I know I'm I'm streaming at a weird time right now, uh, but I know most of you don't really watch at the same time as when I'm streaming, so. Um. You know. Whatever time you stream this, thank you for joining, um, let me know what you think in the comments below. Uh, so yeah, uh, I'm gonna go for, when I do the shiny shiny. Comics coloring style. Uh, I usually do. This process that I think. Um. It's almost a cliche now, like a lot of people. Do it, but I think it's. It's a tried and true process and that's, you you throw the shadows in using black, right? Um, at a thirty-three percent opacity. Uh, on a multiply layer, so that's what I'm gonna do, multiply. I'm gonna throw some black here. And I'm gonna make it thirty percent, thirty, thirty-three. Let's do thirty-three. There we go. Um, and that should. Give us a good base to go. And as I'm doing this, I'm already looking at my line work and thinking, okay, so the light's coming from here. As you can see, there's kind of a a clear light, um. A light effect being telegraphed, he's coming out of darkness, so I wanna make sure to emphasize that. And I'm using a flat, um, well, it's it's a round brush, but. But it's a hard brush, it's not a painting brush, so it's it's almost, it's it's I think the exact same, yeah. This is the exact same brush I used to draw the ink lines. And I'm gonna put this on a clipping mask above that layer, which I'm so helpfully flatted for us today already. And just make sure everything goes consistent that way. Now this guy has two colors, but he's mostly monotone, the the syringe thing is a different color. And I'll deal with that later as soon as I've gotten the. The main colors down, Pat. I just wanna make sure this is well, well rendered first, that everything's working well. Before we move on to fancier stuff, the fun fancy color effects and stuff. Boom, 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 boom. And I'll get, take a bigger brush for this part, just cause I wanna get. I don't wanna overrender the leg, if I can help it, right? That's like a big piece stepping into the light. I'm just looking for opportunities to pop things forward using the colors. And uh, to just harmonize with the line work here and there. Let's do that. Alright. Yeah, I think this is all in shadow here. And then this is probably all in shadow, I don't need to render that up. This has some shadow and some light as it's sort of trailing forward. And. This panel's almost done. I'm gonna put a little shadow here, and I'm actually gonna blend that a little. Keep things flowing, otherwise the natural way to do this is just to keep it. Flat and unblended, sort of cell shaded style. Um, and and I think one of the reasons I'm doing that is because. It's a really good contrast to the watercolor style. And and I need that contrast as part of the story, I need sort of this feeling of two worlds. And the way I'm accomplishing that is through color, so. So yeah. Okay, so that's the black multiply layer, let's do that, maybe a little down here, maybe a little there, there. Let's put some here too. And this can be even more intense. Because. He's really super coming out of the shadow. Certainly not much. Not much in the light. Let's um, turn off the. Letters for now. And. Get that going. Yeah, I'm really excited about the book because there was a lot of setup work I had to do in the previous twenty pages. And now we're at the part where things start getting really interesting, you know, the world starts crossing over and stuff, so. Uh. I'm actually excited to get past coloring these pages and start drawing the rest. But, you know. We work in stages, alright, so that's done with the shadow layer, now I'm gonna do the first light layer, I'm gonna do two la- light layers. Because there's some fun tricks we can do with that, um. Make this a clipping mask, my light layer, I'm gonna use a pure white. And I'm gonna make sure it's at thirty-three percent opacity as well. Boom. And I'm gonna put it up there. Whoop, I gotta be careful not to um. Draw over the shadow, cause if you draw over the shadow, it creates this weird flattening effect, see that? Um, you don't want that. You know, the point of um. The point of these colors is to give form to. To the shapes that I'm rendering, so. I'm gonna do my best to. Follow the forms. And it's it's really like. Treating coloring as if it were painting, you know? And not just filling colors in willy-nilly. Alright, that looks good, let's throw some more here. There. Okay, that's feeling good. Maybe some up there. And then here where it's really fun. I'm gonna blend this a little. Because it's part of the cape stuff. And I want a little softer transition there, but I'm not gonna do that for most of this. Let's make it big. Nice big brush. There we go. And we very quickly. Get a bit more dimension on this character. He's looking a bit warped to the camera, but you know, I think he looks like that. Um. It's just my um, my desk is at a bit of an angle, so. Hopefully it doesn't bug you guys too much. Let me know if it does. We do what we can here at ComicBooker. Oops. I'm also switching quickly, so I do a double tap to switch between the eraser tool and the pencil tool. Um, I know a lot of people don't like that. Um, function and turn it off really quickly, but. I've trained myself to sort of use it consistently, so it doesn't bug me at all. Okay, so that's good, let's throw some light on this cape, because I want a little light on it later. And I'm actually noticing that I want some shadow. On the other layer, so I want some shadow here, I want this whole thing to recede into the background. Right? And I missed some shadows down here on the leg, so we're gonna get them there. Alright. Now we go to the third layer. Oh, this is going faster than I thought it would, how long have I been streaming with fif- ten, fifteen minutes? Um, I'll do a third clipping mask and then we'll do a third. Sorry, this, this white should be on a screen layer. Lights are on screen layers. And darks are on multiply layer, so that's on a screen layer. Um. Put that here. Like that, and then we'll do a second layer here, okay, so I have a shadow layer, a lights layer. My base layer is, you know, this gray here, and I'm gonna have a third. Lights layer, a second lights layer, and that's gonna be my um, highlights layer. It's still gonna be at thirty percent opacity, but given pure white. Actually, I can up that even further. Yeah, I can make it something like seventy percent opacity. And just give it a lot of like. See that, and that gives it sort of this like cut. Look, which I really like. I never really noticed it until like I. I saw Marte Gracias work. Um. He colors a bunch of stuff over at Marvel. Uh, and also another YouTuber. I hope I pronounce his name right, it's Mohamed Agabadi, he's um. One of those YouTubers that's really obsessed with with coloring and. Anyway, I really like. Being able to implement this um. This sort of cut coloring style. Boom, 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 boom. And see how the white really pops in forward? Um. That's sort of the plan. Of this stuff. And I'm gonna avoid putting white on stuff that's really receding to the background, because basically anything with white on it. Is gonna pop forward, given that we have a dark background, so. Alright, that's good. That looks good, right? Now we're gonna do some here. Be a little there. A little there. Not much on this one. It's very um. Light. Okay, so that's that, now we um, now that that's kinda done. Not that, try try not to overdo this. I'm gonna go now into. Rendering some of that. Stuff around him, so first is this. Sort of syringe water thing, well. What I'm gonna do is. Just flat into it. So it's on a clipping mask layer and I'm gonna flatten it like that. I'm not sure that's the best tone for that, maybe. The color match it, I'll darken it up a bit like that. I'm going to hue saturation brightness and sort of mess with the sliders until I've got it to the level I want. A little desaturated, but not super, there we go. And we'll do that with this as well. Boom. Alright, this page is sort of forming up, becoming very complete very quickly. And as I work on it, I'm seeing spots where I I actually wanna put a little more. Um, tone, so I'm gonna throw some of this here. This bubbling. Stuff. And then maybe some in here. To give it a sense of um. You know, like it's a vial that's full of stuff. Alright. Now, I wanna deal with some of that smoke. And I'm thinking with the smoke. I think it should be like a warm gray, since he's such a cool gray character, so. I'm gonna render it in something like this. Same thing, new layer, clipping mask, and I am going to draw into it here. Like that, and just close it. There. So I'm drawing a shape with with the line tool, with this pen I have, closing the shape and then filling in the middle. Really quick and simple. This I might need to erase into. Yep, I need to erase this, whoop. Just gotta let some of that cape shine through. Alright. And then now that we have that. I have this, I think I want some shadow on this smoke, so we're gonna do that. But I'm gonna use a softer brush. Something like an airbrush, like that soft brush. It's really small, so that's good. Mostly because this is um, smoke. So it's gotta be soft and. Amorphous. I don't need a lot, I just need enough, there we go. Cause I'm gonna do some other tricks on this smoke. And then now that I have that, I wanna do some highlights on it too. I'll do some white. Make it seem like he was damaged, like on his way here. Wasn't an easy travel. Um, I'm gonna look through my palette, I think I like that yellow, so I'm gonna put. Just a bit of, uh, maybe not here. We'll put. This is all of it? Put on the right layer, correct, okay. Let's alpha lock this layer, and I'll start putting some. Some special effects on it. Alright. Okay, now I have that. Um, there's the line work. There's what it looks like without the line work, right? These are the colors we just did. And now I wanna do a color hold over the line work. So. That's what I did here to get that effect, so we're gonna do the same thing. And with the color hold, I like using the soft brush, so. That's what I'll do here. A little bit here. And here. It gives it this whole ghostly feeling, right? And I definitely wanna do color holds on this stuff. Maybe not that, maybe something. Oranger. Alright, things are moving at a good pace, I think, whoops. Not go too fast, get too excited. Not go too fast, get too excited. And there we go. I don't know if I want some color there too. Let's see. Clipping mask. Maybe I do. There we go. That looks good, right? I think it looks good. Very strange. Alright. Yeah, I think this is good. This page is in good shape, right? More or less. I'm gonna flip it just to make sure. Flipping is a good way to see if you missed anything. Um I mean that could use some smudging there. It's a little too soft, too hard. Otherwise I think it's pretty good. The letters back on. And now I'm thinking that the color holds might be too orange, so I'm gonna go hue saturation and see what happens if I mess around with the sliders. I like that. It turned the lines a bit pinkish. Um, the smoke lines. I think that looks cool. Yeah. Okay, this is in good shape. Now I'm gonna move on to the next page where we have this guy again. Um so we'll do the same process as before. We're gonna do a layer for shadows. It's gonna be pure black, multiply thirty percent, thirty-three. I'm gonna use a hard brush again for it, this one. This is a really intense page. A lot of stuff goes down here, so this is basically the the big turning point at the end of act one to go into act two, so so the pages had, needs to have like a lot of impact. I'm thinking the light's coming this direction, so I'm gonna throw shadows the opposite end of the light. There. Um, let's throw more shadow here. I think I'm gonna need more shadow as we go back down here, just so I can pop this hand forward. Cause right now it's a little bit lost against the background. We'll throw that there. Boom, boom. Let's redo that. A little there and a little here. Then to color the hand, we're gonna do some thing here like that, something like that. I see there's a few of you watching right now and um I hope you guys are uh having a nice productive Saturday like I am. I was really looking forward to this weekend, the whole week, cause um the pages had gotten to a point where I needed like a good um good long string of hours to to work on them properly. And during the week, because I have work and I have all these other responsibilities, um, I don't actually have a long uninterrupted stretch of time to work on on the book, so uh I usually get to do an hour here, an hour there, um couple of minutes here. I I work on this on the bus. You know, it's very um gorilla style. But the weekend is is when also this is more under my control, so it's a really nice time to just focus. I think too when you make comics and some of you might already know this, cause you might be working on your own projects. It it's, it takes a an almost Herculean level of um concentration. You're like a hermit. You have to be juggling a lot of thoughts in your head. Plot lines, drawing styles, subtext. Can be overwhelming. And really hard to manage if you keep getting interrupted, cause you end up forgetting what you were planning to do in the first place. Alright, I'm on my s- my second layer now. This is the lights layer, um again, it's on screen mode thirty percent and I'm gonna paint in with pure white. Which obviously won't be pure as it comes down because it's uh it's reduced in opacity. I might wanna do some well, I don't know, maybe I might wanna blend this bit a little bit. Just just a little here and there, okay. Yeah, that looks good. There's a real temptation when I'm painting in lights to overdo things. I just it's like you wanna color everything in and I know that's a bad idea because the point of these colors is to complement the line work, not drown it in tone, you know, so try not to overdo it if I can help it. Alright. Again, I really want this hand to pop forward, so I'm doing whatever I can to to give it a bit of pop. Okay, that's looking good. Um I realize now I need a shadow here. I didn't think to put one, but it really needs one. And it's a tricky shadow too, cause it's interacting with him. I'm gonna pretend his figure is causing, is like going behind this, so I'm gonna like draw it a little bit in here to get a bit of shadow there. I'll raise into it to reclaim those bubbles. Then I might do a little shadow in the middle, which I'm gonna blend to keep the liquid the way uh the way it should be, which is a little bit murky and viscous. Think it's gonna look good when it's red, but we'll see. Okay. Boom, boom, boom. And then I want some highlights there, so Hmm. Oh, I get it. There we go. Alright. Okay, ready for the third layer of light. So this again clipping mask, this is gonna be a screen layer and make the seventy percent to follow what I did in the previous page. Highlights are super, super helpful for giving you that illusion of impo- of um of form. But there's a very fine line where if you start overdoing it, it'll start to flatten the whole image out. So it helps to zoom out and make sure you're not overdoing it. I really, really like the design of this guy. This character is called the Unmaker. And he's he's like basically an edgelord character, like super cool, super badass, dark and um tortured um anti-hero. Sort of like Spawn, Wolverine or The Punisher, you know, that type of character. And he plays a really important role in the story. Okay, I think that's good. Now we do yeah, that's fine. Keep the focus here. I'm not gonna put any highlights down here, cause it's gonna start taking away if I put it there. Um, maybe I'll put a little white here, a little there. I don't know, that's gonna be helpful. Yeah, it helps, okay. So now, let's put some here, there, there. And a little here. And a little whoop over there. And maybe some up here. Just tiny bits of highlight here and there. I love this character. He looks so cool. Okay. He's so fun to draw also. Um, alright, so that's good. Now let's put that red in. I'm gonna go back to the previous page and I'm just gonna s- color drop select that red and then bring it back to this page. I'm gonna make it a color layer. And again, I'm just drawing a shape and then filling it in. Okay. Now to this panel. This is gonna be a little more complicated. Let's do the colors first. I'll do a color layer here. And then do that, right? Gotta make sure that the colors of this thing are exactly what it should be. There we go. Better. Now I need a multiply layer. Boom. Some pure black. And we're gonna start thirty-three percent. And we're gonna start coloring into that. So what's happening in this panel is um it's like the syringe is is pushing the liquid in. So there's actually a sound effect. That's the sound effect. And then all this scary red liquid is being shot into our protagonist's body, which is really upsetting and cannot be good for his body. Boom, boom. I've had like um allergies these past few days, it's been kinda rough. Usually happens when it's spring to summer, at transition period, everyone has allergies. But it's hitting me really rough. It's been hard to to get some good sleep. Okay, this is a screen layer. On the plus side, I've been using the time to This is working? Screen. Whoop. Think we may be hanging here. Yep, okay, let's close this out. So this happens every so often. Um. I kinda have to reboot to get it back in a good place. Just close the app out. And then go back to it. So that's, that was my reference layer. I'll leave it there. And then get back to this. Alright. What's up Noah? Welcome, welcome. Thank you for being here on this odd time on a Saturday. I'm just coloring my, my upcoming graphic novel. I'm doing some fun pages. Um, okay, so that's good, and then one more clipping mask. And we'll do a screen layer at seventy percent. It's very intense, this scene. Boom, okay. Alright. I like that, um. Let's just mess with the sliders a bit. And then I wanna do a clipping mask. Oh, here's the line work. And here's the shadows, boom. So I'll do clipping mask here, let's put the line work under the shadows, like there. And we'll do that, it's kinda gray, grayish cyan, again. Hmm. I don't think this needs much, so I'll just put a little here. Uh. Yeah, that's a good place to put some tone. Let's put some there. Okay. Alright. Now, I wanna deal with this panel at the bottom. So I wanted to look kinda like here, this first panel of the like page one. Cuz that lightning is gonna be a bit of a motif, so I'm gonna grab a deep red, I guess. Start. Well, maybe the first thing I should do is get that lightning in. So for that, I'm gonna use a default brush, um, here on Procreate, which is called Light Pen. And I'm gonna set it to this nice magenta, I think it's gonna give me, yep. Or maybe I'll just set it to red. And I'm gonna make a lightning bolt. Something like that. And it's sorta similar, which is good. I'm gonna do some strays around it. Yeah, that's pretty cool, okay. And then underneath that, we're gonna do some very, very dark rendering. Hey Kayla, Kayla Garrett, welcome. Welcome to the stream, I'm just working on my book today. Hope you're having a good Saturday. And to make it even glowier, I'm just making the, the, the background around it a lot darker. It still has to read as red. Um. Which is pretty easy, that's not gonna be a hard feat to accomplish since we're, we're on a very blue page, you know. I'm gonna make this a little darker, more. Great. And now that I have that, I wanna bring this red, this intense red up into some of the colors, so. Where do I put it? I'm gonna put it up here. Whoop, maybe not. Okay, I'm gonna put it down here. Yeah. I think that's gonna work. Yep. So we're gonna put some of that there. Just so it, it calls down to this panel. We'll just harmonize wherever we can, right? Alright. Let's mess with the tone there. There we go. Hmm. I think that's that. So these two pages are done. You've colored that dude, and you've colored him here. Um, give me a sec, I'm gonna be right back. Okay, so now that we're done with page, so the sequence is this is page twelve, whoop. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and then sixteen. Boom, it gets crazy, um. Whoops, did I ruin it? I did. Let's do it again. Which reminds me, now I wanna put some red here. Um, Starlight Sharice asks, how many pages did you, have you done so far altogether? So, all complete, um, fully colored, I'm up to page sixteen now. Line work is up to page twenty-one. So, it's, it's really moving, it's really on its way. Um, okay, now I need to put some red here. And the idea is that the liquid is sorta going into his body. It's a little morbid, but but it'll make sense when you read the graphic novel. It's not blood, it's just sci-fi horror poison. Um, Ronald Chubik, Seubik Book? Seub, I'm sorry, I think I'm butchering your name. Chubok. Um, asks, I wonder how many pages of drawings he has just in the Procreate app? Um, I have I have a ton. So this is, this is every, all the files I have right now. So it goes all the way down here, so I have some thumbnails, YouTube thumbnails, and, and you know, stuff there. Random sketches, and when we get down here, I even have like subfolders full of crap, preliminary sketches, some really ugly stuff. Some comics artwork here. I kept all the stock artwork that comes with Procreate, because um, I just like looking at it once in a while. It's nice to see. Um, so yeah, I have, I have a ton of stuff in here. And um, I clear out like once a year, I think I've been using the iPad for like maybe four or five years now. So it's, it's been a minute. But yeah, my goal is to do this complete graphic novel in Procreate, um. And, and so far it's working, so far it's working. I'm really excited about it. It's shaping up. Um, okay, that's that, and then I want some of that red here also. Actually, maybe it's just all red. Yeah, it's probably better that way. Uh, Ronald says you got it right the first time, it's like chewing a book. Chubok, okay, Ronald Chubok. Thank you for joining me here today. Um. Yeah. Yeah, I think this page is really, so what, what happens on this page is he gets hit, right, with that thing? Um, it's the first super sci-fi horror thing that happens, cuz it's been very realist before that. And then suddenly we're in a flashback. Um, and actually, the thing with this flashback is again, I need this red here. Because it suffuses the background, like that. As if, um as if the flashback is happening in his perception as the liquid as the poison starts to like overtake his body. So, I'm gonna put a soft brush, correct. Make it as big as possible. And I'm gonna do that. There we go. And also, I wanna use the light pen to kinda draw a lightning bolt through this whole thing. There's a zero point five inch margin around the edges of the page, so I have to be aware that there's some rendering I might put there that won't actually appear in the final piece, but it's a good, um it's important to have it sort of for printing, so I get a full bleed page when it goes to the printers. Okay. There we go. So, see how that looks like some, some, something's going down? I think it's gonna have that effect. And then my, I guess my next question is whether it happens in here too? I don't think so. Oh, wait, 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 I know what, what I meant to do. Okay, so we'll, we'll we'll go back here and we'll do it again. But this time was it that red? It's one of the reds, yeah. But this time, I'm just gonna move it up here, right? And then I'm gonna do a Gaussian blur. Like that. Boom. I'm gonna put the darker red there too. I'm gonna put the darker red there too. Whoop. Um, note to self, I have to fill in this caption with something. I, I left it blank on purpose cuz I was thinking... Of a better line for it. So, I'm gonna do that. Okay. Something like that. And then, back to the light pen to get us that... Super... Lightning look. Whoop. I'll make sure... That I'm on a red, there we go. Whoop, okay. So I can't go past that. Okay, let's do this again. Charles i... Oh, hey Charles, welcome, welcome! Okay, I'm gonna lower the gain on the mic. Let's see if... Let me know if that's better. Yeah, I don't think this needs much in, in the way of like, lightning stuff, but... So the point is that, you know, um... As much as, uh, these scenes... Are very mundane, it's like, the kid's going to high school and he's drawing all this stuff. There's an air of weirdness going on in the background because of the... Um... Well, because of what's happening in the story. Okay. I think that's good. And then that leads us to the third flashback... Page. I'll take that out. And we don't need much, we're just gonna put that there. And actually, the book is, um, a, a long series of like... It's got, it's got a lot of flashbacks going on cuz it, it inter, it's interspersed with what happens in the, the main narrative. I'm gonna put that there, and I'm gonna do a little trick up here. I haven't colored this page properly yet, so... You know... Uh, I'm putting special effects to, a little too early, but... But this is what... Before I forget, I might as well put it in, right? I was thinking of doing something like this for the white stuff. Get, get a sense of the borders kind of... Bleeding out, as if the memory is, um... Is coming in from white? Alright. Um, Ronald, uh, I live in, I, I, I work in New York City. Let's put some of this stuff here. And I don't wanna put that effect here because, um, you've probably noticed... It's got, it's supposed to look like the panels are turning into pieces of paper that are kind of... Um... Falling down, so, I'm gonna leave that as is. Uh, alright. Now... Where was I? Okay, so we're done with page... This is page fifteen. Done with page fifteen. Done with page sixteen. I can color this now... Or I can jump to a more exciting page. Um... I think, since I'm live streaming for you guys, I'm gonna go to an exciting page, so, we'll do this one. This is, uh, page twenty-one. And... It's the page before all the fun stuff goes down. Um... You'll notice, I have this watercolor texture, paper texture overlaid here. That's because he's colored in watercolor style, so... But everything around him is gonna stop being colored that way because we're entering into that other world. Um, anyway, I'm gonna merge this down, merge down. Clipping mask again. And I'm gonna use that palette... That I've been using for all the colors so far. And we'll use a flow brush, and this is gonna be... Pretty easy. And nice. Oh my god, this face, it took me forever to draw. Um... Take a look at the time lapse, like... So, this is, this is what the page looked like as I was making it. And then, look at this. So, this was the pa, the, the way I drew it, and then I had to redraw it to that. And then, when I was inking it, I drew it to that, and then I did it again, and I messed around with it, I hated the, the face. I changed the eyes, and then finally I arrived at, and changed them out several times. And then, finally, I arrived at this. But that face took me forever to go to, like, just... A big headache of a face. I wanted to get the expression right, you know, it's sort of like a... An expression of horror. Because he's being told that... It's like the first time in the book where he realizes that he's actually gonna die. Okay, we'll get that there. Skin tone here. Boom, boom, boom. Really quick. Um, and let me fill in the other layers first before we proceed further. So, I need a layer for his hair. Which is this... Which is this blue tone. It's actually the same tone that I used for his, uh... His, his slacks. And I like to do this stuff first because... It gives me some darker colors to key off of when I do the skin tones. Alright, let's do that there. Alright. And then, one more layer for the shirt. Because the shirt is white, but I am rendering it with this sort of... Light blue gray of white. Uh, Starlight, uh, do, uh, is asking, "Do you use Clip Studio 2?" Um, I do, I actually have it here. See here? I have it here. Um, and I've done a bunch of stuff with it, but, um... Like, here's the template that I'm using in my current Procreate piece. Uh, but I've decided to... Work on this comic completely in Procreate. Um, one of my, my friends, he, he works for Marvel, his name is, um, Luciano Vecchio. And, um... He works almost exclusively on Clip Studio... Um, for all of his professional pages, so... Uh, that makes me wanna learn Clip Studio and, and be better at it. Um, and I've seen hi, his pages like, and he works on an iPad like this too, so it's kind of... Kind of amazing to watch him... Do his stuff. It's all print-ready, you know, as long as you've got the, um... The specs correctly, you know, the dimensions and everything, it's gonna print really nice. Okay, so that's good on his shirt, now let's refine that skin tone. Um, first, I like to put a little bit of... Red on the nose and the cheeks. To give it... Just a hint of like the blood showing through, and on the ears too. Whoops, not too much. Same here. Some... Red on the nose and the cheeks. A little bit here on the lips. Definitely on the ears. And then here, here as well, just some on the ears, there. Um, that looks really wacky, but... It'll look good in time. Now we do... Some shadowy skin tones, so... Yeah, Charles says, "Clip Studio is pretty reasonable subscription price for the iPad." Yeah, I think it's like five bucks? A month, something like that? I'm not sure. Let me know in the comments if you know. Um, it does not beat Procreate though, Procreate is ten bucks, flat price. Um... No subscription fee. So, I, I always think of Procreate as like the best ten bucks I've ever spent, cuz, just so... Just cuz I bought it ages ago and, you know, I use it every day now, it's just... My go-to program for art. Hey Alex, welcome, welcome! What time is it there in the Philippines, you're up early. Good morning to you and Kate and Hector, hello, hello to everyone. Yeah, um, if you are watching right now, let me know in the chat where you're watching from. So great to connect to people from all over the world. Okay. Okay. That's good, very light. I don't know if I'm gonna overdo it. I may, I may... Make this a little darker... As I, um, color around him, sometimes you have to like... Sometimes it doesn't work to color in isolation, and, um... You have to, you know, colors respond to the colors next to them, so... I may have to come in later to... To adjust this, but for now... This should do. Oh, what's up, JBotArt? Welcome to the stream, JBot asks... Uh, "What brush are you using to get that watercolor look?" So I'm using the, um... The Max U Watercolor Flow. I think I've mentioned this in past live streams, but, um, the... The, the watercolor brushes I'm using are by Max U Lickney, just Google him. He's one of the best Procreate brush pack makers, and I have a bunch of his brushes. Uh, but, yeah, for this graphic novel, I'm really relying heavily on his, um... Watercolor brushes to make it... Look the way I want. Whoop, okay. He also has, um... If, if, um... If you do get the brushes and, and try out, try them out... Um, I recommend watching a tutorial video that he put up on YouTube on how to use it. Cuz he talks about the principles. Um, notice that I am working from... From light to dark. Which is how you should be working when you're doing watercolors, cuz the light is the, the paper. Um, and then I'm trying to have a certain amount of, um... Uh, stroke economy. Which means, i-if I put too many brushstrokes down here, it starts to lose the, um... The watercolor effect. You wanna kind of... Um, get a tone down in one stroke if you can. So I try not to lift the pen and until I've covered the area I wanna cover. Now wait, does the... It's got the right depth, right? Hmm, I'm gonna smudge, whoops, I'm gonna smudge this a bit. He's, it e, it even comes with these smudge, um... Smudge brushes, which have been handy. Use the smudge wet flow. And then really dig in to get that flesh tone. Alright. Okay, that's in good shape. Let's go here. And here, what's going on is there's a very intense light in this panel, actually. You can't see it, but... My layout... Has it sort of... Mapped out there, so... I wanna make sure I'm, I'm painting this more intensely. There should be a hard... Shadow throughout this whole panel. Like that. Let me go back down to... The shirt. And make sure that shadow is there. And then just to make things clearer, I'm gonna erase into the hair to give it light up there. There we go. It's gonna make sense in the final panel. Whoop. Let's just clean that up a little bit. Alright. Okay, so that's good, now let's work on... The baddie. And, uh... We'll do the shadow layer first, and that's multiply... Blending mode at... Thirty-three percent opacity. And I'm gonna draw with a pure black. We'll use a matte Hollingsworth Rich Black. And I'm gonna use a flat pen here, there we go. Aw, man, I love, I love, I love thi- this moment in the story, it's so cool. Because this, this character is a character he made up. So, you know, we're at a really weird point in the story where he doesn't understand what's going on, he doesn't understand what's going on. Um, but he knows exactly what's going on. So he gets to explain. Oh, SilverPhantom's here, welcome, welcome! Yeah, I'm working on the third page of this stream already, this might be one of the longest streams I've done um, ever. Uh, it's, and it's mostly cuz I, I batched, um, I, I worked, uh, on pages in a big batch, uh, for the past six pages, so... I have a lot of pages to jump in and color in one go. Testing one, two, three, can you hear sound now? SilverPhantom says he can't hear any sound, um, if you're watching, guys, let me know if you hear me. Okay, so that's the dark. Boom. Oh, Kayla is watching from Louisville. That's cool. Hmm, and JBot is watching from the east coast, so I guess that's, uh, California-ish, wait, no! East coast, you're New York-ish somewhere. So you're in the same timezone as me. Yeah, any plans for Saturday night? Cuz, um, my plan for the rest of the night is just, I mean, I gotta feed some dogs in a little bit, but, um, other than that, I plan to work non-stop on this cuz it's in such a good, exciting place, I, I, I don't wanna lose the momentum. Oh, glad you figured out the sound, Silver. Okay, so I'm gonna, I think what I'm gonna do is do that. Okay, makes more sense. Panel four? Let's do that. And then panel five, again, it's, it's a really intense, intensely lit panel, so I'm gonna keep that in mind as I do the renders. I expect to have like a, almost white rim light. Thanks, SilverPhantom, um... Yeah, it's, it's, if all goes well, it should be done by October this year. So, wish me luck. I mean, you guys will know cuz I'll be updating everything on this channel as I go. I mean, it's, it's been so intense, I haven't had time to make real videos. It's been mostly live streams. But I think it's okay cuz, you know, the payoff is having a, a finished book, you know, it's gonna be so cool. I'm really, really excited for this story, I think it's I think it's a, a, a great story to tell. Especially if you're an artist, um... Yeah, this is one of those stories, like, that's about being an artist. What it's like, why it's hard, and, um, why it's so fulfilling. Okay, so that's that, now let's go to... Well, let's see, I think I want some shadow there too. And then let's make this all in shadow there. Boom. Alright. Now, I'm gonna go to the light layer. Get into white. Screen layer, thirty-three percent. Boom. And we're gonna do that. I just have to get through these pages cuz the next page is where all the fun starts. Um, oh my god, wait, let me show you the layout cuz I'm excited about it. This is, so this is page twenty-one, and then it's situated on a page turn, right? So when you turn the page and you see what he's looking at, ta-dah! It's like a whole bunch of superheroes, so... I get to draw all of these guys. Um, forgive the super sketchy sketchy, but, you know, obviously, it's in, um, it's in progress, but I can't wait to draw this page, this is like dessert, so... I'm gonna have my greens and make sure all the pages leading up to it are properly rendered. Um, and then I'm gonna eat my dessert, just, just spend a day or two drawing a cool superhero splash page. Which I'll have earned by that point. I think the base tone is a little light, so I'm gonna go into Adjustments, whoop. Hue saturation, I'm gonna lower the brightness a little bit, there we go. Yeah, better. That way, I can see this light more. Dum-dum. Yeah, I hope you guys don't mind, it's a little spoilery, I guess, if I'm showing all of this now, but we're still early in the book. I'm probably not gonna livestream like when we get to the final few pages, you know? Just cuz I wanna make sure that's, um, you know, that part of the story is kept intact. Um, but I don't mind showing off these early pages. I don't think it spoils much to see, you know, awesome badass super stuff happening. Whoop, there we go. Okay, okay, we're nearing the next part. So now, I'm gonna go to work on the Highlights layer. And that is, again, a screen layer. None to seventy percent. And, whoops, there it is. It's just gonna be small bits of white here and there. Alright. That looks good, I'll do this here. Boom. So, so for a bunch of you, um, who've been here before, uh, this is the first time I'm I'm, I'm filming the livestream where you can see my hand, do you prefer this? Where you can see my hand working? Or do you prefer it when it's like linked directly into the iPad and you just see the screen? I don't know if you noticed, but, um, yeah, I have a new setup today. Let me know cuz, um, I'll, I'll I will move forward with, with whichever style of livestream people prefer. The downside of this is, um, uh, this, this current setup is, it's at a bit of an angle, and there's a little bit of reflection on the screen, so it's not one hundred percent the colors I'm seeing. Um, but the upside is you get to see my hand. And then the other style where it's hardcoded, um, you know, you see as accurate colors to the iPad as possible, but you don't get to see my hand as I make it, so I don't know. Ronald votes for hand, okay. Noted, Ronald. Yeah, when I, personally, when I watch live streams, like if I'm watching Da- Daniel Warren Johnson or Stephen Zapata, I like seeing the hand. Um, which is why I wanted to try this. The other thing I wanna try is I actually, um, I actually bought, um, one of those screen protectors for the iPad. One of those paper-like screen protectors, so I wanna test that at some point. It was really cheap, it was like, um, ten bucks for like two. Now we'll see if I, I like it. Just the, 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 the big downside really with drawing on the iPad is it's so slippery. You don't have that friction. Okay. Alright, so that's good, now, um, okay, wait, I need white there, good. Now I wanna put red layer. And this is gonna be a color layer. There we go. Whoops. Color. Alright. Actually, I should just make this whole thing, whoop. I'm gonna make this whole thing red. There we go. And this whole thing is red. Okay. Fun stuff. Um... Whoop, I gotta fix that. I realize his eyeballs have got to be white. And the teeth, there we go. That brown color for his eyes. Boom. Okay. So far, so good. Uh, one more page to go. Let's work on this fun page. Yeah, cool stuff's going on there. But I'll reserve that for later. We'll just have to color this dude down here. Then I probably have to... I'm gonna do this in ten minutes and then I gotta run. Oh, Charles says, "Just choose one focus and let it hunt search for focus." Um, yeah, it's on autofocus right now, but I can change that setting later on. Kayla likes it, helps follow my own art iPad eleven, nice. I like the setup, use the same setup the way I can use the digital traditional, I did have to shut off autofocus in the camera though, yeah, I think I'm gonna do that for the next one. Um... Yeah. So that's, that's what's gonna happen on the next stream. Oh, you'll notice the background here is a bit sketchy, that's cuz, you know, it's not done, I'm gonna have to render it in this s- weird style, so... Um... We will refine that later, but I wanna color the fun stuff while you guys are here with me. And then stay tuned for next week cuz um I'm gonna livestream again, and then I'm probably gonna be doing a a superhero page, which is gonna be fun. Alright, so right now I just wanna knock back a lot of this stuff. Here, I need some tone to get this to look like there's water sloshing around inside this syringe. Uh, Starlight, I'm probably gonna livestream again next um next week. Uh, Sunday. Not Saturday, Sunday. Uh, I I don't have a set schedule yet. Um. And um I would have livestreamed tomorrow on Sunday, but um I'm going to a comics class, so I want to get this done today. But yeah, Sunday next week. If you guys are free, come join, come hang. I'm gonna be working on probably page twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty-five, depending on, you know, where I get this week, how far I I end up getting. Oh, I really love this angle. It looks so cool. I'm so happy this worked out the way it did. The the sketch was um the sketch was like that, and then it just sort of I had to refine it from that to that to get it there. I think it really worked out. Yeah, I don't think it needs all of that rendering, so I'm gonna do a little less. There we go, something like that. Let's not forget it goes all the way down here. And now we're gonna go to highlights, clipping mask. This guy's so complicated to draw, but also so satisfying. This is a screen. Thirty-two, thirty-two is good. It's kinda giving me Skeletor vibes. So the way I designed this guy is I drew a child's drawing of him first so that I had a good silhouette. Um, and then I uh I extrapolated from that simplified drawing to a more complicated version, like this guy. Actually, it's it's on page four, I think, of this thing here. So this is the original design for that character. And then, you know, I complicated him up so that he'd look like that. Which is really fun. Anyway. This page actually has a ton of special effects because there's gonna be this perspective curvilinear thing here. Um, and also it's gonna be superimposed with some of the the earlier um flashback scenes. Um, it's gonna have like this weird lightning effect on it, but I can't really do any of that until I've colored the flashback scenes nicely, so I'm gonna get to that later tonight. Um, I realize he's also a little light, so let's make it a little darker. There we go. And now let's do the highlights. Layer seventy percent, white, and it won't be much, just that. Uh, tiny bit here. Some there. I wanna smudge that a little bit. Whoop, let's fix that. A little white there. And then lastly, oh, here, you can see the bleed. See, there's a a bleed mark there, just so you can see the the page um the page dimensions are sort of mapped out properly there. Okay, so that's good. And then now we just have to throw in some of that red clipping mask. Let's make this a color layer. And the red only applies to the liquid here, so because this is the panel where the syringe kind of refills itself. That's why it's super sloshy. Alright. Let's put low here. And that's it. I think um I can leave this at this for today, right? Um, I'm gonna work on this some more the rest of the evening, but I think we did some good work today, guys. I hope you got some good drawing done also while you're watching along with me. Um, yeah, have a great weekend. I'll see you next Sunday. Peace.